Okay, we're being recorded. We have to be nice now.
Is there anything I didn't see? Is there anything else on the agenda tonight?
I didn't see.
I'd like to discuss height and try to get that resolved.
Anything else on agenda?
Oh, no, no, no.
I didn't see it at all, no.
Code discussion.
Yeah.
Is Steve gonna be with us?
Don't know.
He's got a minute.
And can we also, can we also try?
What's that?
Steve's coming in.
Can we also try to resolve? Chapter sixty-four. H D R B. There was the one, one thing that we inserted. That the H D R B did not want.
You guys start earlier or something?
Hello there, we're waiting for you.
It is five fifty-nine. I am early.
You are early.
I'm early. Oh, no.
No, Lynn and I were early. Sorry, guys. We know I've been talking for, what, twenty minutes?
Wow.
Wow.
Well, I had to make sure that I remembered all the instructions Jeff gave me on how to get in.
Oh, you're running this meeting?
I'm Jeff tonight. You haven't noticed my name?
Oh, yeah, there you go.
There I am.
That's impressive.
Right, see, I got promoted.
I can barely log on to the whole thing. Run it.
I have my little cheat sheet.
Okay, well, I will call our meeting to order. All viewers out there that happen to be dropping in. We're reviewing the recommendations from code update committee, reviewing the code, and that is all that's on our agenda tonight. We'll not be taking public comment. You'll have plenty of time to comment at public hearings in the future, very near your future, hopefully. So with that, take it away, whoever's taking it away.
Oh, wait, I have some input.
Can we settle on, settle on chapter sixty-four? We had recommended that interior inspections not be permitted. And the H D R B wanted that removed. Sean was going to consult with Shippo. That was two months ago. I haven't heard anything back. So can we consider that chapter sixty-four is complete? With the insertion that interior inspections are not permitted?
I think we can go ahead with that and public hearing, looking voice differences and change it at that point if we get out and discuss it.
Okay, so we'll make that change and then move it to clean, cleaned and okayed.
When are we speculating that these public hearings will start taking place again? I know, I know this, but remind me.
No, if you know it, you tell us.
No, I don't want to guess.
We still have to do, we still have to do chapter forty, which is building construction. We have to, we have to complete one thirty-four. And then there are probably ten or more chapters that we haven't looked at, which had no code update changes to them at all.
Right. Do we have to complete everything before we can start public hearings on other things?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, so at this point, we have thirty-six?
Thirty-six, one twenty, one twenty-two, thirty-six, one twenty-two as a set, forty.
One twenty-six, which is hanging on my desk because I have to get all the inserts that Larry and I have spoken about. And I keep promising Maria I will do that. And finishing one thirty-four, and that's everything that the code update committee has made changes on.
Right.
So, so we're not too far off.
Finishing one thirty-four, one twenty-six, and what else?
Thirty-six and one twenty-two, which works as a, as a team. And then chapter forty. Okay, Kathleen's coming in. Someone else is coming in. Let me just see who's coming in.
Now, chapter.
Are we expecting Charlotte?
She, I asked, she said she was gonna, I was asking her about height and stuff, so she said she was now on, working from home, and if we had any questions, she'd be glad to answer or say that she didn't know the answer and needed more time. Hi, Charlotte.
Hello, Charlotte.
Hi, Charlotte.
Out on the beach?
Nice to see you. Thanks for coming.
Oh, thank you for the invitation.
So, chapter forty is building construction. It's entirely new. Sorry, it's an entire replacement for the old chapter. The old chapter forty essentially said, there's a building inspector. He's appointed by the village board of trustees. The new chapter forty is based upon the New York State model for building construction. Charlotte has looked at it. She's made some comments which have been incorporated. It has been reviewed by John. So it should be very straightforward to go, go through it. Or you can opt to just accept it as is because Charlotte and John have both reviewed it and their comments have been incorporated.
Okay, but Dave, you asked Charlotte to discuss fences?
Yes, I talked to her about fences, then heights.
Building height.
Building heights, yes. So, building heights, she recommended let's see, street.
That's on page seventy-five, I believe, Dave.
Building height?
No, it's I'm sorry.
Definitions. It should be. So what did Charlotte recommend?
She said to take the, well, I think our problem was with the, with the facade was and a name for that. She recommended or suggested the street. The facade with the street, with the street for which the lot is named.
Can you send, can you send that to us?
That's, that's good. If Charlotte could do that, that'd be better, I think. Because I jotted it down and this was it was hard to get answers and stuff in one day. I talked to John also, and he hadn't even reviewed any. I looked at my email, so I couldn't get answers from him. I called Charlotte, called back. Well, I sent her a really late email, but she got back to me right away, and that was around five or so, so.
So Charlotte, can you send us the definition for building height? That you recommended. And Dave, and Dave, that's nothing but excuses. Come on.
I'm full of excuses.
Yes, you are.
Charlotte, that, Charlotte, you had said something with the street for which the, the lot is named. But I'm not sure how to incorporate that in the whole thing, so.
Right, you know, I definitely would ask the attorney for exact language. The best way to write that, but looking at that so that, with the idea that if it's a corner house, the corner house, you would look at if the lot is called, is called Main Street and it's at the corner of, say, Cedar and Main. Then you would measure it on the Main Street side as opposed to, say, the Cedar Street side.
When you say the, the street that the building is named, I am a partial owner of a property on the corner of Church Street and Main Street. There are multiple addresses to which mail is delivered to that building. Main Street and and Church Street.
Does it have a lot name, though?
Well, when you say lot name.
Well, is it referred to on, I don't know, is it referred to somewhere as, as Main Street, right? Or not?
The question.
Tax map or, or your tax when you receive tax.
In the tax bill, the, the tax bill is directed to one fifty-six, one fifty-eight. Or is it one sixty? The, the tax bill is directed to one fifty, it's directed to Main Street. So, so if the tax bill is included in the definition, that works.
Right.
Right, so every lot should have a section, block and lot number and a legal lot name. So however that leak, however you term that legal lot name.
Okay, so then you refer to the tax legal lot name.
Right, because you could have multiple buildings on that particular lot. And if for some reason, because of the way that the lot is, someone wants to do something different, they can always go to the zoning board of appeals, but at least it would give you some uniformity.
Okay, so if we could see the definition.
What's that?
If we could see the definition.
So we're measuring the building height from the highest point of that, so Main Street for the property Maria's talking about, is it the highest point from that?
On the, from, from the finished grade on the tax map, whatever, whatever facade of the building.
The highest point on the corner, the highest corner point, right. And the difficulty that we had was that originally the definition was the highest point of the roof, where the roof was defined differently for the type of roof. And I suggested that it become building, and you pointed out that building could include parapets and cornices. But if, if it's to the, what, to the highest point of the building would also include the chimney. So the definition has to exclude the chimney. Because the chimney has to protrude higher than the highest point of the roof.
Right, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
So Charlotte, if we're measuring the height of a building, a building height, and say the building is on Main Street, we're measuring from the highest corner point of the main facade of the Main Street that the building's on?
The tax map name.
The tax map name. So the tax map says the building is on Main Street, so is it, is it the north, the east corner or the west corner, depending on where we are, is it? Because there's, everything here is on an angle.
It depends where the highest point is.
Right, so we're going to the highest corner point.
Yep.
Of building.
That's to be the highest point on that facade, which is probably the corner point, but.
So we start at the ground at the highest point of the property.
Agreed.
And we, we measure straight, and so it doesn't have to be corner. It has to be the highest point.
Well, if people want to take advantage of the height, they're gonna go to the highest point, which would be the corner.
But, but Fran's point is, is a good one. It has to be the highest point of the tax map street name. It could be an anomaly that, that some property has a higher point in the middle.
Right, that would be an anomaly for sure.
Yeah.
Right, rather than, so we're going from there up.
This.
Well, you know, some people have wobbly, you know, anyway, we're going from there straight up to the roof.
Go there to the highest point of the building, which would, with the exception of the chimney. So if it's a peaked roof, like Garden Cafe, it has a peaked roof on it. So you'd go to the highest corner, which would be on the side of Garden Street, and you'd measure up thirty-five feet, and that would be the height of where the peak of the roof would be.
Right, highest point of the building with the exception of the chimney.
Yes. Because as Marie pointed out, it would be higher than the, it's usually higher than the ridge.
Right.
And if it's a building width, it's as low slope, you, you would include the facade or the decorative cornice are on top, so you'd measure the same way.
And again, excluding the chimney.
And all, all the measures that I took, I mean, there are definitely, you know, like, there's a few that, like, Founding Cafe is a very tall building. And there's, there's a few others, but they're, they're the exception. Most, most are under thirty-five, and even if they're three, three stories. So I think that covers everything. If not, then, and John said that there's a, I forget, he said there's another municipality he's working with that's having a problem with the definition too. Because it adds four, the way it is written now, it adds most likely five feet.
Permitted. It permits an additional five feet. Right.
So we're trying to keep everything to thirty.
Lower.
Yes.
So while we have Charlotte, um, can we talk about accessory buildings, home professional businesses and accessory buildings, home occupations and accessory buildings? Just for an opinion? Hi, Charlotte.
Charlotte's opinion is based upon what the code sets.
Okay, but do we need, I mean, is there a law that says we would need a C of O if you have a, an occupation in an accessory building? Or a professional office?
The structure itself would, so let's say, I'm going to convert my garage into my work-from-home office. That conversion is going to be done with a building permit. And then that particular structure will have its own C of O at the end.
Okay.
That is if we permit home professional offices in accessory buildings.
I believe our code right now does.
Does not.
Okay.
We're struggling over that at this.
It's not, we're struggling. We voted. So currently, the code says that home professional office or home occupation has to be performed in the primary structure.
Okay, but the accessory structure can have except, so you can have the accessory uses, but not, but not for compensation.
Is that, doesn't that what it is? No, it doesn't. It says that the home professional office or a home occupation has to be performed in the primary structure. It does not permit home professional office or home occupation in an accessory building currently.
So the discussion on the table is, do we want to allow that? And my question is, if we do, do we need to have a C of O for those buildings to allow any kind of occupation in an accessory building?
Well, there are two things. There's home occupation, which we voted on, and
Right, and we lost.
Yeah, we lost. And we did not discuss permitting a home professional office in an accessory building.
So, and the, the definition or the difference between a professional office would be a licensed professional using it as?
Using it, period.
Yeah, we, we, we it also has, our definition has something to do with compensation.
Right. That was the one that I saw.
We're, we're in definitions now?
In the definition section.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I'm looking at the same.
We're on page ten, I believe, or page nine.
So the first question, Charlotte, is if someone performs a home occupation in an accessory building, would that require a C of O?
A home occupation?
Yep.
Yes. So any structure that is being built that is going to accommodate.
Back up a second, back up a second. Currently existing accessories buildings such as garages.
A garage.
Or shed.
A garage or shed would take a certificate of compliance.
Compliance?
Yes.
And what goes into?
So that's not considered an occupiable space, but it is built to code.
Okay.
That's to have a home occupation, whether or not there's financial gain, right?
But if it's going to be a home occupation, so.
You're not allowed to sleep in there, right? It's basically, it's just office space only, and it has to conform to, there's electricity and plumbing, and it has to
Right, so
legit.
The home occupation, so if I were going to put my office there, the office would have to have a certificate of occupancy, but it would be a certificate of occupancy, occupancy equivalent to an office building, so to speak. Which is often, which is where there's no sleeping.
What would be, what would be, you, what would you be looking for in that structure to provide a certificate of occupancy for either a home, for a home professional office?
I would be looking for heat. I'd be looking for light and ventilation. I would be looking for insulation and energy code compliance, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms. Things like that.
Okay.
So that's for a home professional, if you just want to have a home occupation in a garage, you need just a certificate of compliance.
What does that entail?
Um, no, that would be a certificate of occupancy for the accessory home occupation, because that's going to be occupiable space for humans. If you're doing just utility, it's compliance.
It's utility, meaning storage?
Right, storage, tool sheds, things like that, garages.
What goes into a certificate of compliance?
The certificate of compliance, so in a detached building, we're looking for the structural elements. We're looking at whether or not the materials are, the flame spread of the materials, are we, so it's not going to be, because you don't want to store, say, gasoline and, and your lawnmower in a building that is going to be, you know, dangerous, or that's going to collapse as well. The distance from other buildings, things like that. So it's really, it's a lower standard, but with the idea that people are not going to be in them for any extended amount of time.
The difference between a home occupation and a home professional office, is there a defined definition? Does one, does one, because the way we have it defined in our code, a home occupation says an activity used or carried out by the inhabitants for gain profit or financial support. Now, and then the home professional office talks about professional people, physicians, dentists, real estate brokers, etc., etc. It doesn't mention anything about financial income. But
Right.
So is there, is there a definition, a legal or an accepted difference between home occupation and a home professional office?
I think what they're, my, my reading of that, and from my experience, my feeling is that the difference would be dad goes out and builds a birdhouse to put in a tree. As opposed to someone who is running a business of making birdhouses and will be doing a hundred and twenty birdhouses per week with this, you know, maybe even with an assistant. So I think the little things that we do, fixing a lawnmower as opposed to running a lawnmower repair business.
So.
I think the, the difference of the way we have it written, Charlotte, is that the occupation, the home occupation is something for profit, so that would fit into your second scenario where the guy's building a bunch of birdhouses. So how is that different than the home professional office? The home professional office is basically licensed, you know, licensed people working as a secondary, you know, using a accessory building.
And I just, I want to clarify one thing. The home occupation and the home professional office are, in our code, prohibited from making sales.
Correct. And I think it really is just, it, it probably is there as what is customary in a, in a neighborhood as opposed to what changes the character of a neighborhood.
Um, we have that.
That's spelled out pretty specifically in the section of this chapter. But for me, looking at these two definitions, I just don't see a lot of difference between the two. I mean, where home professional office, the people that we're imagining this applies to are licensed people. You know, where they need a license to operate, they're still doing it to make a living, to make a profit from their efforts. Just as the people who are running a home occupation, the guy who makes a bunch of birdhouses and sells them on the internet. Is, is, am I, am I incorrect in that? I just, I just don't see a lot of difference between these two, except that
One has a license.
One has a license and the other, you know, the other, you don't need a license to do.
I think
Do we distinguish these two?
I think what I've seen these, these types of terms used before, a lot of what they're trying to eliminate are things that will, you know, again, the character of the neighborhood, noise, fumes. A blacksmith could move in and say, this is my home occupation. And you know, the noise level would change, smoke levels, fumes, things like that. So I think that's why they say a professional office where the expectation is that it will be one person, or maybe one person with an assistant, doing predominantly office work. As opposed to lumber or other things like that. And I imagine that if someone who says, well, I'm a painter, they could always go to the zoning board of appeals and say, you know, I don't think that my profession will have a negative impact on the neighborhood and get the variance.
So in either case, I think we're looking, looking at two different things. In order to have a home occupation or a home professional office outside of the main residence, so in an accessory building, you need to have a C of O, is that correct?
Correct.
No, she said, see, so I'm sorry, Charlotte, you said a certificate of compliance for home occupation.
Oh.
And
Yeah, in the beginning, on the beginning.
Okay.
No, the certificate of compliance would be for a utility use, such as a shed or something, or a garage, something like that. But once it's a building that people are going to be using for working or living, then it becomes the certificate of occupancy. Because you'll be occupying your office space or your workspace.
So you're, you're, I'm a carpenter and I want to have a carpenter shop in my garage. I need a C of O.
Correct.
Even if, even if you're not profiting. So if you wanted to just go out and work in your garage and do carpentry work, I don't think you need a C of O for that, do you? That's not what we're talking about here, anyway. In our home occupation and the professional, it's, both of them are about making, you know, money or side, your little side hustle, whatever. So, so both, you know, include money, so it seems like that would need a C of O. But I can imagine you'd be restricted to doing something out in your garage that was an active type, you know, hobby. Yes, no.
Well. No, I don't think you're restricted to that. I think if you are, you know, again, say, building the birdhouse, and you decided to bring it, you can bring it inside the house to paint it. You're not restricted to being there for that or limited.
I think we're talking about occupations in both of these. It's, you know, so like, we're going off on another, I think we're going off track here. We're starting to talk about people and what they're using their accessory buildings for, but this, this specifically is talking about residents or people that own a building, have an accessory building, and they're using that for, to make money, either professional, which seems to be passive use, you know, or professions with licenses, and home occupations also. Where you could be a carpenter making some cabinets, or a potter making pottery and selling that, not from the building, but you know, elsewhere, online or something.
Or a blacksmith and making horseshoes.
Blacksmith, there's restrictions and are things that would, you know, actually.
You can't be firing a coal stove up and spawking iron in your garage.
Well. What says, what says you? Well, what's, what says you can't?
Well, we have, we have fumes, we have noises, so we have two things.
Fires, you know, the blacksmith shop is under the purview of an entirely separate entity. I mean, you have to, can't just set up a blacksmith shop anywhere you want to, you have to deal with the state and all that other stuff.
So it sounds like what, what Charlotte's saying is that we'd need a C O if you're going to be using it for something other than just building a little birdhouse or going out there tinkering around or whatever, and you're not making any money. If you're out there and you're going to be working and making some money, you need a C O, which would protect you and the residents.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Yep. That sounds about right.
Now, Charlotte, our, our code also says that a home professional office has to be permitted, there has to be an application for permit, and the permit has to be granted for a home professional office, regardless of where the home professional office is located. That is either in the home, in the primary residence, or currently our code does, says you can't do a home professional office in an accessory building. But what you've just said is that it would be permissible unless our code says no.
Correct.
And I would assume, is it correct to assume that in applying for permit for a home professional office, which I suspect has never been done in the village, that that permit would kick off the requirement for a certificate of occupancy?
Correct.
Can I claim that I'm only going to be using my home professional office in warm weather in the summertime months, such that heating is not required? Or insulation is not required?
Interestingly, the building code gives that, actually, no, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. It only gives that authority on single family owner occupied houses, so no. It would have to be built to standard.
Okay.
Good.
So Charlotte, since we're putting a little bit, you know, putting you kind of on the spot here without really looking at it. It, it's, could you just take a closer look at that and kind of get back to us, like, as soon as you can? And just, you know, look at what we do have, look at home occupation and home professional office? So we're all on the same page and see what else would be needed, instead of just saying you can have a home occupation. Maybe it means a home occupation as long as it has a C O, I don't know.
Okay, do you have your proposed uses written up? Your proposal?
No.
For changes, no, okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Recommended.
Yes, I made the changes.
Basically saying.
I made the changes.
We're basically saying we're allowing hot, home occupations, that's what we discussed last week, we're allowing them in accessory buildings.
Right.
So there's no, there's nothing about C O's or anything there. We're allowing them to use accessory buildings where they weren't allowed before in a garage. So there's a person at the end of my street that has a two-car garage on the side. He uses it to make pottery and he sells it to, you know, I don't know, online, or he sometimes has sales and, I guess, on Facebook or whatever. So right now, he's using that, but he, I guess he should, I don't know. And we're saying we're allowing it, that's what we'd like to change it to.
Oh.
Yeah.
Charlotte, Charlotte, I can send you the updated code that identifies the changes in either an accepted version or a redlined version, whichever you prefer.
Which, whichever you have closer is fine.
Charlotte, as long as we have you on the phone.
So you're working your normal job or?
Or, and in video. One of the topics that we're going to be discussing later is whether or not short-term rentals can be allowed in an accessory building. Currently, the code says, no, you can't have a short-term rental in an accessory building. But one of the proposals on the table tonight is to permit short-term rentals in an accessory building. Currently, in, and the primary concern here is in the R1 district. The R1 district is limited to one-family residences, of course. So would short-term rentals be a permit, be permitted in an R1 district where the R1 district says it is a one-family residence district?
Okay, well, I guess there are a couple of things that you would have to be able to push past on that. And one is your livable floor area per dwelling unit is 600 square feet, so they'd have to have 600 square feet to begin with.
But that, that makes, but that makes them a dwelling unit, and that immediately says you have two dwelling units on one, on one lot.
Right. And a short-term, so a short-term rental, if it's in a separate building, the accessory structure is going to have to be a complete dwelling unit. You can't rent someone just a room with no bathroom, or just a room with no kitchen. You would have to provide them.
And, and doesn't that, doesn't that then go against the definition of R1, which is a one-family?
Yes, ma'am. So, you know, I know a lot of people try to say that, oh, it's a mother-in-law's apartment or something like that, but it's a full, separate dwelling unit. So I would say no. Um, I would say no to that, because then you would almost completely lose your R1 district. And what is short-term? One week, one month, six months, one year?
Less than 30 days.
At a time for up to 100, 150 days or 100 days per year. It, it, you're establishing a separate rental, a separate residence on the premises.
Marie's asking you, but she's basically telling you.
Well, no, that's the basic problem. It's.
I'm not arguing with you. I, I agree that it's, 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 it's adding another residence, or it's adding another possibility for another family to be living next to you, and it's a one-family area, so I'm not arguing.
And it also becomes impossible to regulate.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I could drop, I should, I could, I could stop renting it as an S T R and turn around and rent it out for five years.
And, right, and tell my tenant, you need to go away every other weekend, so the code enforcement officer doesn't catch you.
Yes, you, that's you.
We'll stick you on them.
Yeah, I think, I think it, it becomes a real logistical nightmare. Unless you were going to do something that was really quite tiny, so that you would be more assured that you wouldn't end up with full-use dwelling units. Or, you know, year-round dwelling units on there, by making them small, like, you know, tiny, like, the most minimum of studios are allowed in accessory units, something that people really wouldn't want to stay in.
Another thing in our code is that we don't allow it for a full year. So there is a restriction on how many, and we haven't discussed that totally yet, but right now, it's like 105 days out of the year, you could use, so it wouldn't be someone there year-round.
Well, but, but the point is that once you, once you approve that structure to be a.
I'm just making a point about as far as, you know, the, the scenario where somebody leaves for a day and then rents for another.
No, 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 no.
You can't do that.
So, sorry, yes, you, yes, you could.
No, you can't. We have a limit on the S T R use as.
Hear me, hear me out. I, I rent as an S T R this year. And then next year, I decide, I don't want to, I don't want to rent as an S T R, I want to rent it out full-time.
Well, full-time is not allowed right now.
Well, that's just it. Once you have a C O for this second dwelling unit, and it has in it all of the facilities that you need for a residence, you could.
No, you can't, according to our root codes, you can't do that.
What code?
I think the code as far as having a two-family, it would become a two-family at that point.
But as soon as, as soon as you establish that use, that, sorry, that structure.
Establishing a temporary use, we're not, we're not acknowledging or, or.
Yeah, but if it, if it has a C O as a, as a dwelling, it's established. I mean, I, you know, and then, and then the, then you have two residences on one property. I mean, you can do an S T R in the main house. But doing it in an accessory building.
About something that I don't even know how many people are agreeing with, but I know, I thought, I know Lynn had thought that you should be able to use them. I don't think you should be able to use them, so, and Marie and Fran don't, so there's three there. Steve, I don't know what your thoughts are on it.
An accessory building?
Once again, we're in a discussion that's gone off the tracks about something we might not even have to be discussing.
Okay, okay, you want to take a vote right now? It was a question while Charlotte was.
Could, and if I could run the meeting, maybe I ask Steve his opinion on it.
I'm ready when you guys are.
If you would like to.
I may have some more of my seltzer, hold on.
Well, it was a question while we had Charlotte that we thought we would ask her.
Yes, well, it makes no sense to be able to turn an accessory building into a short-term rental. And most people in this town don't have room to build a building the size Charlotte's talking about in their backyard to rent out anyway, it wouldn't work. So if you're talking about an attached garage apartment or something, that's not really an accessory building. If you're talking about a basement apartment, that's not a sec, you know, that's not a separate building, but I would challenge you to show a yard to me in this village where you could put a 500-square-foot dwelling with a kitchen and a bathroom and attach it to the main sewer and electricity and all that. No, no one has a yard like that, so it's not an issue.
I do, I do, I do.
Don't build that building there.
Because Steve touched on something that I think is important. If you have a detached garage that has an apartment above it, and I know of a couple of these in the village, and it's a fully functioning apartment, could you, could you use that as, rent that out as a short-term rental, or Airbnb, or whatever we want to call it?
If, if you can get a C O for it, sure.
Well, you'd have to have a C O for it if it was an apartment above.
I don't think the garage is big enough.
If it was a garage apartment anyway, right?
I, I don't know, I don't know that it ever got a C O.
And the question is, is it, was it legally done? Some of these things in the village were never legally done. And I know of a couple, too. There are apartments over garages that, that aren't legal.
Well, yeah, I don't know whether the ones I know are legal or not, but, you know, they're here, so. So. Yeah, and I'm a little, I'm a little confused, because I thought we were on chapter 134.
We jumped. We were, we were just taking advantage of the fact that Charlotte was with us.
Right.
We were talking about accessory buildings.
Charlotte, are you working your other job while you're talking to us?
I am on my dinner break.
Oh, geez.
Oh.
We're so sorry.
That's okay. So. Yeah, I think the apartments that you're going to find over the garages and things now are going to be pre-existing, non-conforming things that were built back in the 30s, 40s, 50s.
No, I know one that was built less than 10 years ago.
That's uncommon in the village.
Yeah, it, it is uncommon, but they do happen. So.
And so rentals right now with our code, like full-time rentals are, they're not allowed in the R1, in a garage apartment. If there was a garage apartment.
Or any R1.
Legal, can you rent that out?
If it's pre-existing, non-conforming.
No, if it was, if it was conforming and somebody wanted to do it legally, and they said, I have an apartment, I want to get a C O for this, and then they rent it out, can we do that?
I sus, I suspect, Dave, that people that have apartments over garages that are pre-existing don't go and say, can I rent it out? They just rent it out.
Well, I'm just asking if they can rent it out. I, I don't care what they're thinking. Is it legal for them to rent an apartment about their, if, you know, if, if Charlotte went there, gave them a C O, can they, can, can that person, can a person rent it out?
She gives them a C O, yeah.
So then couldn't they, so they can't get a C O, but this went to your, your last, one of your arguments was that that would make it a two-family in a one-family district?
Yeah.
So how can that be allowed then?
I have one of those, because my, when I bought my house, it's a two-family, says it right on the, the goddamn paperwork, or when I bought my house and got my mortgage. It has apartment and a house, two-family, Nine Constitution Drive, and that's when I bought it 11 years ago, is what it said on it. So somebody somewhere violated the, the rules of, of R1, this is R1, this street. And there's.
Is it Church Street R1?
Yes, Church, Church Street is R1.
And there's a number of apartments and buildings there, so they're not one family.
There's two-family houses on Church Street and.
There are three and four-family houses on Church Street.
Exactly. So I don't know why that.
Talking about going forward, or are we talking about throwing these people out on the street because?
We're talking about going forward, which is what we're always doing, talking about going forward, what's, what's theirs, it's pre-existing.
Going forward, say something happens and this person has to, you know, go through some legal process, and they're like, well, you have a non-conforming apartment, so turn the whole house back into a one-family, sorry about your luck. I mean, what, how does that work?
I think part of it is going to be, when did we adopt this zone as R1 and its definitions? Do, do the apartments predate this, the current zoning? You know, I see some of it was added as far back as 1970, so if they were there before zoning, zoning came in, then they stay because they are legal, they were legally constructed at the time. And then there's also the, in section 134, is that 7B? They can get a special permit from the zoning board for the conversion, so some of them may have gotten the special permit for, for conversion into a two-family dwelling.
It's true.
So there's, you know, maybe not everyone did it that way. They did it at my house, obviously, because it's on the deed or whatever. But, you know, there's a ton of apartments in Cold Spring that haven't done it yet, and they, people have been living in them for decades and decades. And they're perfectly fine, they're legitimate size or whatever, but.
But that'll be all of Main Street as well. Most of Main Street have several apartments above a storefront.
But that's.
That may or may not have been, you know.
That's not R1, but yes.
You know, within exactly what our zoning would allow now, but pre-exist.
Okay. So regarding, going back to short-term rentals, and do we, or do we not want accessory apartments, whether they are 600 or compliant or have a C O or not? Do you want to have short-term rentals in accessory buildings?
No, no.
Accessory buildings only we're talking about? No, yeah. Name, accessory buildings only, not.
Yeah.
Not auxiliary apartments.
Right.
Yes.
Just accessory buildings, detached accessory buildings.
Yep, mower shed is now, got a bunk bed in there and you rent it out, short-term rental. Yep. Mower shed is now, uh, got a bunk bed in there and you rent it out, short-term rental. No, that's not good.
So, Dave, you wanna brief Lynn? She just got back.
We just, we have, just kinda took a shuffle, like four of us think that there shouldn't be, uh, there should be accessory apartments used as short-term rentals.
No, 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 accessory buildings.
Detached accessory building.
Detached accessory buildings.
Should not be used for short-term rentals.
Okay, well, I'm outvoted then. I, you know, I'm just kind of imagining scenarios where where okay, imagine that somebody has a house and they have a nice little accessory building with a bathroom in it. Um, that maybe they use for an office or, and, you know, they throw a bed in there and wanna rent it out. Um, I mean, a, as a customer, I would much rather stay in something like that than have to share the house with, you know, a room and a house with the owner. You know, this kind of sense of privacy that you would get from it, but, you know, I don't know. If, if you don't agree, that's, that's fine. I, I mean, I'm okay with that.
Well, I think again, it also let you, it, it still allows someone who would like to do that to go to the zoning board of appeals.
And they can get a variance for that.
That's right.
I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, sorry. I mean, the short-term rental, it, uh, is by permit, by a lottery. That's what, what we're, that's what we're looking at right now. And it would seem to me that one of the requirements for a valid permit to get a short-term rental, uh, to be one of the 25 short-term rentals would be to have a C of O already in place for the structure as opposed to, oh, we're gonna give you a permit and by the way, you've gotta go do whatever is required to get a C of O.
So if we determine that you can't do a short-term rental in an accessory building, then that, I mean, you, if we determine you can do it in your house, but not in an accessory building in an R1 district, then that's.
That makes it move. Yeah, it makes that move, right?
All right.
So, are we in agreement that?
Yes.
Okay, so four, yes, is one, no?
Right.
Okay.
Do we have anything else for Charlotte since we're eating into her dinner break?
Dinner, dinner is gone, Rachel. Sorry.
Or briefly about.
Ruin your digestion.
That's okay. I gained COVID-19 pounds already this year.
Oh, Lord. I have nothing else for Charlotte.
Okay.
Thank you for joining us, Charlotte.
Thank you very much, Charlotte.
Thanks, yeah. Take care. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Have a good evening.
And have a good Thanksgiving. If we don't see you, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Just can't figure out why my house is so cold.
Did you get heat? Did you get oil or whatever?
In this room.
All right, so do we want to move on to short-term rentals, or do we want to stay on 134? Where are we at here? We, we did. What, what about fences? Do we wanna deal with fences?
I can't even remember where we left at.
David's gonna talk to Charlie.
Morning from John, but, uh, John didn't take a look at it and he hadn't gotten it. I talked to him at like 3 o'clock today. One, one thing that Charlotte actually brought up, although she just left, was that, and I, and I think we brought it up at our last meeting, that if you, I think Marie brought it up, if you do, if it's within the setback, then you can do whatever you want. Like, so if, which is just ridiculous and we should change that. I mean, you could come two foot inside and put a 20, 30, like Charlotte said, you could, it would be like any other structure. You could put a 35-foot fence up if you wanted. So, we should definitely change that. I mean, the fences should be, I think the fences should be on the, on the perimeter and if they're inside, they should be.
Consistent.
Should be a restriction.
Yeah. I'm sorry, you gotta watch out for that because you, you must have fences around swimming pools.
Right. Three feet.
I, I don't, I don't know that there's a limit on the height.
There's a.
Limit. There's a, there's a minimum required, but I don't think there's any maximum stated.
Right.
So whether them swimming pools, anything else that's inside the boundaries, we wanna have it consistent with the regulation for the rest of the zone? Or you wanna have, do whatever you want?
Do whatever you want. I mean, that's the whole purpose. It's your land. You can do whatever you want on it.
But on the boundary, you have to have.
11, 10 feet.
Or 6 foot or whatever.
You could have a, a dog pen. You could have a chicken coop, like a chicken coop.
Multi-story chicken coop.
So the rest of the fences, we're waiting for John to come back?
He was going to, well, I talked to him about the, uh, I gave him the examples and the, you know, kind of the thinking both ways on having it from the corner of the house and how that definition would work and what's clear and what would make sense there.
So can we go to SDRs?
Sure. What else did, do we clean everything else up in the, uh, 134 or?
The only other thing, and I tried to flip through it, um, I can't be sure. The only other thing is, uh, I had in, in September, I think, um, stuck some information about overnight accommodations in 134, thinking that we might be putting short-term rentals in this chapter. Um, that can easily be taken out if we determine.
I think it should be thrown in chapter.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'd like to see it in its own chapter. I think it's easier to deal with.
How you doing?
Dinner is on us.
Some, uh, some kale Caesar.
Ooh, wow.
I was looking for pumpkin pie.
Oh, I don't have any of that.
Dave's so healthy. Look at what he's eating there.
All right, look, look. Kale Caesar with roasted chickpeas, cumin, cayenne.
Dave, what happened?
Dave, I thought you only ate pizza.
Stephanie, none for me.
No, it's green. Come on.
No Coca-Cola in it.
If it has Skittles in it, I would consider it.
You can add them.
Bye.
Fran, your, your suggestion about 1349A deleting it makes sense, which would then.
Where am I now?
1349A is the, sorry, let me just tell you about it. This is the, this is the one that refers to appendix D. So I think that we can delete 1349A and delete appendix D, which. I will take care of that tomorrow.
Just for everyone else, before we take care of that, um, I tried to, to balance out appendix D. Um, as Marie had asked us to take a look at it. Appendix D basically just gives you a whole bunch of tax code, um, numbers and says basically this is what was in B1 and then the next section says in 2004 or something, this was I1 and now we've changed it to B1 and there's a page and a half of tax code numbers. Uh, Marie had created a, an alternate appendix D which gave us street addresses that showed us all the street addresses that were in B1. And I said to Marie today, as I was trying to figure out what I was doing with it, um, that it sort of makes no sense for me to have an appendix of all the tax code addresses or numbers for, uh, the B1 district in the, in the code. I mean, I, when they made the change back in 2004, I guess it made sense, but now why are we listing just that? And why are we either, should we either take out all of appendix D? Or should we put every property in the village and say what, what zone they're in? Um, which doesn't make a lot of sense either. So I think, I think it would make sense to just take out appendix D.
And, and appendix D is referenced from 1349A, which talks about the boundaries of um, B1 west of the railroad tracks and east of the railroad tracks on the north side of Main Street and the south side of Main Street. And again, it just, it, it doesn't add anything to the code. So I recommend that we just delete 1349A and appendix D.
Um, that's fine with me if it's fine with everyone else. They've lost you.
I'm good.
Yeah, okay. We don't see your face. We just, is that because you're eating kale?
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Eating kale.
Yay. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna delete 134.
I'll take care of that from 1349A and appendix D. And I'll note in the index that appendix D is not used.
Okay, and then, uh, and then let me know. Okay, thank you. Okay, I thought I was just going crazy. Okay, so that takes care of, the only other thing is I said that I could see in 134, other than going back and doing a full new read, is that I had stuck some stuff in, um, about overnight accommodations. If we wanna have uh, short-term rentals separate, I will go through this and if it's just referring to that, I will take it all out. And that, I can do that. I can do that at another time also. Other than I had home office, home professional office, overnight accommodations, the appendix D. Uh, 13417 on accessory buildings. Is there anything there that we need to look at? Supplementary regulations applying to all districts and this talks about accessory buildings. It's on page 60.
60?
Six, 60.
What, the renewal inspections?
Um, okay, I'm sort of lost. It was 13417. I think things have moved.
Yeah.
Supplement, okay, it's actually page, um, 61, supplementary regulations applying to all districts. Um, we talked about the detached garages and I had a note saying Dave was gonna simplify. The height, detached garages shall not exceed a vertical height of such and such and so on and so forth. Um.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, so that was, okay, so.
Sorry, that, the, this was specifically created and worded in that way. By the code update committee.
Okay, I think it was basically just the, the 13417A1A, just.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Right, the information. So other than that, um, I don't see much else. I'll, I'll flip through again and see if there's anything else that we need to touch on.
If you wanna leave the way you're measuring it and just have the measurement goes to the, regardless of what type of construction is to the highest point of the roof.
Yes, yes, I'll change that, Dave. I'll take care of that, Fran.
Okay, so you're gonna just, um, so you'll simplify, okay. And then, uh, yell it. Okay.
I don't know too many detached garage, well, yes, there are actually. Never mind.
Okay, um. I don't see much else. I will flip to 134 again. Um, we're meeting Tuesday, right? Do we have a regular meeting Tuesday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hope so.
And then whatever we can do here, uh, but I'll, I'll flip to 134 again and see if there's anything else that I think we missed. Um, and we're almost there. So do we wanna?
A little disappointed that it's Thanksgiving next Thursday, you know?
Oh, yeah, you want to meet, Steve?
Yeah, Steve, we could make it 6:30 so that everybody can finish their dinner first.
We'll eat a little later, so I probably won't.
I was gonna be on dessert by 6:30. I'm not sure where dessert's coming from. I know where dinner's coming from, but I don't know where dessert's coming.
I'm making desserts for several people. You want me to make you a pie?
Thanks, we've ordered, we've ordered takeout dinner. Thank you. I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's gonna come with a piece of pie. At least I hope it is. If not, I'll have to order that, sir. The River View.
Oh, oh.
Jimmy's doing takeout.
I can't.
I, I decided I wasn't cooking for two people.
I could see that.
I was gonna be lazy. Okay, short-term rentals.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Proposal for.
Okay, tell everybody, yell when you're ready.
Ready.
Yes, Steve, okay.
Yep, I'm looking at it.
Okay, started out, Dave says everything in blue is not set in stone. Um, okay, that's fine. First comment, we're adding in the definitions, an accessory building is not to be used as a residence or an accessory apartment. Therefore, an accessory building cannot be used as an STR, um. From what we just determined, an accessory building cannot be used as an STR, so we're good with leaving that as it is?
Yes.
What, why would you? I'm sorry.
We're gonna keep your, we're gonna keep your comments in.
Okay, but, and so you're gonna take everything else out?
Um.
Yes, because it says accessory buildings to be used as an STR must include full bathroom, kitchen, bedroom.
Okay, got you. All right, so I'm taking out the sentence before that. So the definition of accessory building is a supplemental building or structure, the use of which is incidental to that of the main or principal building or structure and located on the same lot. The next sentence will be an accessory building is not to be used as a residence or an accessory apartment. Therefore, an accessory building cannot be used as an STR. Correct?
So they, so should that be there though? That's not the definition. I mean, down, down below in regulations, we should put that. Accessory building can't be, or why are we putting it in the definition?
Yeah.
Seems a little.
Yeah, I would just take it out, the whole definition.
Take out the whole definition. I'll leave it as a supplemental. Be the first sentence?
No, take out the whole definition.
No, but, but don't we need that if, if we're in regulations? Is it somewhere else? Does somewhere else specify that you can't use an accessory building?
Yeah, you're right. So you need the accessory building definition there.
Okay, so in regulations, we will say.
Regulations, you could put, an accessory building can't be used. Or if you think it works here, that's fine. I'm just bringing it up, but it's like.
No, no.
I just added it in short-term rental regulations as E. An accessory building is not to be used as a residence or an accessory apartment. Therefore, an accessory building or cannot be used as an STR. I just, I cut it and pasted it.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, it may be reworded to clear it, but, okay, let me come back up and pull it out of. So we're gonna leave the definition of accessory building just to say supplemental building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I got, yeah, you got it.
Okay. And I think Lynn, Lynn wanted to suggest a change in designated agent.
Before we get to that.
I think that's more understandable.
Okay, the, the two means of egress was okay, right?
Yeah.
That just means you need a door and a window, pretty much. Have some interior fire trap.
Okay, so instead of designate, it should say agent?
Yeah, so we'll have to change that throughout. Which I'm fine with.
All right, let me just. STR change. To agent. Okay, um. Okay, this, this, I, um, a dwelling unit. Uh, okay, we're gonna go back, Dave. I apologize that I screwed this up. Um.
You did screw it up. Yeah, housekeeping is a weird word.
Right. Okay, so where are we now? And a dwelling unit is defined as, uh, okay, so we're taking out what, Dave, what you put in, right?
Yes.
This dog is.
That's Stella. She was bothering me, so I put her in her kennel and now she's barking to get out.
Oh, you mean?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay, so. I'm sorry, I gotta open this up. I'm trying to work on half a screen and it's not working well. Okay, so the dwelling unit, building a portion thereof, blah, 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 blah. Identifying accessory buildings as STR essentially.
Okay, delete, delete identifying the sentence that starts identifying.
Let me, yeah, let me go back for a second because I think I took out the wrong stuff here.
Now you took out, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah. It's basically saying the same thing, only throwing in housekeeping and living facility.
Oh, okay, I got it. And that comes out. There we go. Okay, a host. Host is okay.
Actually, no. The person who owns or otherwise is in possession. That implies a person who's renting.
I think that should be taken out. The person, it should be the person who owns and thereby offers to the public.
Okay, so we, we don't want to allow a renter.
Right. And we got, we'll change that down at where owner is.
Yeah.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we definitely made that change.
Right, so a person. That comes out.
Yep.
Okay, I guess is any person residing at a dwelling unit during an STR? Oh, I went back here.
Can you go back? Can you go back to house? The person who owns or thereby offers to the public by any means whatsoever now existing. Or here and after arising, I think it should say the person who owns. A short term rental within the village.
No, hold the property offered for short term rental.
I think it'd be shortened to, yeah, the person who owns.
A short term rental within the village.
That's pretty clear.
Okay, so we need to, we can take out the rest of this person?
I, I think. Sorry, but by any means whatsoever now existing or here, here and after arising.
Okay, so that much comes out?
Yep.
Okay. Official map.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure why official map is here. Or anywhere for that matter.
Um, I don't know. It's copied from someone else's village, right? Yeah, it could be. I don't know. If it's not referred to anywhere else, we don't need it. Where it's, uh, when you, what you have to.
It's referred to in the definition of street. If you move down the next page, it's referred to on the definition of street. Public thoroughfare. On the next page down, in the definitions.
Why is street not just a public thoroughfare?
That's fine, too.
Yeah, I mean, do we, is street used anywhere?
Well, I don't think we've come up with a real definition for one of them. So I would leave that for now, but put a little. Question mark or something on it and maybe we can delete it.
Okay.
We're fine with, if we're determining the distance between. Between short term rentals, we might need street, maybe not.
Okay, we'll see.
Okay, so do we want to take out official map? Is that definitely coming out or is that staying in?
It, that has to stay in if, if, if the street definition stays as is.
You just, just highlight it. It'll probably come out, Fran.
Okay, all right. Guest, any person residing at a dwelling unit during STR.
Yeah, and the, 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 the word reside is defined as being. Is defined as being at one's permanent place. I suggest since, instead of saying residing, saying staying. At a dwelling.
That works for me. Everybody okay?
Good.
Yeah, is there another word for staying? Staying sounds, I don't know.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I just, it was quick. I just came up with a quick one.
Okay, owner.
Uh, I think Lynn brought this up and then I re- reread it and I, I think this is where it allows someone to sub.
Sublet.
Yeah, so we should definitely get rid of that. That's definitely a problem. So anything after CD above can take out. Or, or if you just want to refer, don't want to put owner in there at all, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know that owner is, is.
Is needed. It's already host, right? So just, we'll just have to check, make sure we don't use owner again.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me go back for a second. I'll weave it in. Owner, owner is used thirteen times throughout.
Yeah, and right in the next definition, owner occupied, occupied by property owner. And Fran, you used to criticize every time the definition, the explanation. Contained the same words as.
Right.
Phrase. And here, it does.
Okay, occupied by property owner occupied, occupied by property owner of record. As primary residence and where owner resides for no fewer than two hundred and sixty days. So glad this does not mean the owner must be president. Pair of signed properties being rented. Primary residence. Um, okay, we. Other than they, the roundabout definition. The two hundred and sixty days is, I mean, no fewer than two hundred and sixty days at this point. It is sort of a. I'll leave it, but you know, I, I don't like a hundred and thirty days in our one district, but let's, let's move on from here and then we can get back.
Um, can I suggest another word for staying?
Yes.
Sure.
We could use occupying. It's under guest. Any person occupying.
Person occupying the dwelling.
Rented as an SD, as, as VR.
Where are you at, Lynn?
Um, under the definition of guest.
Okay, I was, I was looking at the wrong tab. I just clicked.
Instead of staying, occupying a dwelling unit.
Remaining in.
And we should change the rest of the sentence because an STR is not a, is not an event. So during doesn't really work. But any person occupying a dwelling unit rented as an STR. There you go.
Okay, owner on occupied primary residence, dwelling unit on the property where the owner resides for no fewer than two hundred and sixty days per calendar.
I think got their guess, it should be A, not N. As ASTR, right? As a short term rental.
Okay.
As. ASTR.
You sure?
Yeah, well, he said the word out, short term rental.
Right, yeah, okay. Okay, primary residence.
Catholic school really paid off, Dave.
Public lottery, random drawing to determine recipients of STR permits.
Uh, we can change whatever. I just put that, added that in.
Right.
If you like that, we can leave it.
It, it works. Short term rental, debt rental of a dwelling unit or accessory building, no accessory building comes out. To visitors in exchange for a fee or compensation with the monetary or otherwise for dwelling, sleeping or lodging. For a period of no less than two nights and no more than twenty nine consecutive days. The term short term rental does not include bed and breakfast, inns or hotels, establishments. Um, see chapter one thirty four tourist homes. Did we take tourist homes out of one thirty four?
Yeah. And I think inns is gone as well.
There's, there's still hotels and.
Yes, hotels remain in, yeah.
So refer to that, babe.
Um, can I just say, see chapter one thirty four? Taking that out.
Just for sake of argument.
I, I am having a real hard time. Okay. It's jumping all over the place.
You, you need to put a space back in there on after breakfast. There you go.
Okay, yeah, sometimes, okay. The term short term rental does not include bed and breakfast or hotel establishments. See chapter one thirty four. Short term rental unit, the dwelling unit, or accessory building, this comes out. Rented out for use as a short term rental. Okay, street, we're leaving street in.
Do you need, like, on the short term rental unit, sort of out of. Rented out, should that even be there? The dwelling unit rented as a short term rental?
Okay, better.
Yeah, I think here, um. So. If only it would stop jumping. Um, a short. Oh, I can't find it. Sorry. Short term rental, rental of a dwelling unit to visitors in exchange, is that what we're on?
Yeah.
No. Right, right below that. Term rental unit. Okay, the dwelling unit rented for use as a short term rental. Okay, the dwelling unit here. Would be the whole house. And. It seems as if. Since bedroom is defined above, that. A short term rental unit would be as small as a single bedroom or as large as a whole house.
Do we want to say the portion of the main dwelling unit rented?
I, I, it could be the whole house, so it's not necessarily a portion.
Is this a term that we use elsewhere?
Dwelling unit, yes.
No, short term rental unit.
Uh, yes, it is.
But a portion could be the whole thing, too.
Portion implies less than the whole. Yeah, but yes, you're right. It could be the whole thing or it could be a portion of it.
Yeah. Well, then you could put the dwelling unit or portion thereof rented for use as a short term rental. Does that make sense?
That would work.
That way, the dwelling unit encompasses the entire house.
But, uh, but it's, we have dwelling unit above. Building or portion thereof. Or portion thereof, there you go.
Okay, in the, in the definition of dwelling unit.
It explains it. A bill, in, in the definition of dwelling.
Building or portion thereof, providing complete house.
Okay. There you go. So I think we're covered by leaving the dwelling unit.
Yeah, okay, so now looking at dwelling unit, um, I think you, I don't think you want to say for one family. Because in subsequently, the.
Or renters.
Yeah.
We want the definition of dwelling unit. Are we talking about the same thing as the short term rental unit? Is it the same definition?
Yeah, that could be.
Yeah.
Maybe we want to call the dwelling unit, um.
The short term rental unit?
I don't know, let me think. There's five places, one, two, three, four. Oh, the only time we use dwelling unit is in, right in that page, five times.
The short term rental unit, Lynn is used in K.
Right.
The definition, there's a definition.
I'm just wondering if, if we just have two definitions for the same thing.
Right.
That's kind of what it looks like.
To me, a dwelling, building a portion thereof, providing complete housekeeping and living facilities. Can we junk? Can we take out for one, and then definition of dwelling unit, can we take out for one family?
What if we say the portion of the dwelling unit rented out for short term rental?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, but the dwelling unit is defined as portion. A building or portion.
That's where I got it from.
Dwelling unit, building or portion thereof, providing complete housekeeping. In the definition dwelling unit, can we take out the last four words there for one, or the last three words for one family? You just say a building or portion thereof, providing complete housekeeping and living facilities.
Yeah, makes sense. I don't know if it was a portion. Well, I don't know about that.
And then put the portion down on the definition of short term rental unit. The dwelling unit or portion thereof rented out for use as a short term rental. In K.
See, when we, when we define primary residence in H, it says dwelling unit on, or on property where the owner resides, no fewer than. To me, dwelling unit is the, the main house before it's broken up.
I don't know if that's true. I don't know.
Maybe not.
In some cases, but not all. So I think the dwelling unit is, well, I think it's there so that it establishes that if you have. Well, I guess that's the S R, short term rental unit also. I don't know.
In, in E, where it says guests, can it say any person occupying? A portion of the primary residence, a primary residence or portion thereof, because we. Instead of saying dwelling unit. And then primary residence.
I give you takeout, leave dwelling unit and takeout for one family. And then, then the other things I think work, don't they? If the, uh. The primary residence H would be the dwelling unit or property owner resides. And if you look up top, it'd be a building. Providing complete housekeeping and living facilities. And if you go to short term rentals, you, you could also refer to that. Dwelling unit, so it's a. Portion of a building with housekeeping and living facilities.
Okay. Okay, so dwelling is a building or portion thereof, providing complete housekeeping and living facilities. A guest is any person occupying a dwelling unit. Primary residence, a dwelling unit on property where the owner resides. No fewer than two hundred. Right, that, that works. It's over dwelling unit to visitors. Right, that that works. It's over dwelling into visitors. I'm okay. Shall we move on? Okay. Next. Okay, short term rental regulations. No more than twenty five registered STRs will be allowed at any one time throughout the village. Permit good for one year. Limit on the number of registered STRs may not be varied by the zoning. And you underline that, that works for me. Short term rentals will be allowed in R one and B one districts. And then we just moved this one, the accessory building. Not to be used as a residence or an accessory apartment, therefore an accessory building cannot. Okay, we just added that into the regulations.
Just change this to say an accessory building cannot be used for an STR.
Right.
Just leave it at that?
Yeah.
Take out all the rest?
Yep.
Okay. All right, public lottery, the village will advertise for STR applications. No later than September fifteenth, applications accepted from October first and November.
Right, I think it should be as an SDR instead of four. Yes, no?
Yep. It works. Whoops.
You should get rid of and again, and just have a used as a short term rental.
Okay. Properly completed application will be given. Can we say all? From the total number of applications, twenty five lottery numbers will be randomly drawn.
I'm not.
Already regarding location.
Short term rental regulations? Are you one down from? Oh, you're public lottery. I see.
Public lottery, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so he was a little confusing because I thought it would be. The location, I just, I thought priorities should be, and I was explaining it maybe not not well, and I'll probably just babble on here too, but. It was the first, the person that gets the first draw. Say they get it and they live on Parrot Street. Second person, if we're, if they're separated by several lots or however we decide. And they're within that, then they wouldn't, you know, the first person would get priority of the location is what I was trying to say. Does that make sense?
What you said makes sense. I'm not sure that the words follow that. Priority is confusing. The word priority is confusing on. So.
I think in the regulations, the the section above that, we need to say. Only one STI will be allowed per block, per blah, blah, blah. However, we're going to define it, but it needs to be up in the regulations and then we can refer.
Yeah, I think we do that.
Something about that somewhere.
Yeah, it's in there. I think we have to move that the.
Yeah.
Okay.
About blocks or not blocks, several.
Properties, I think you were talking about.
So can I move F up to the regulations and the short term rental permit? No permit will be allowed for any property within seven lots from a lot where current permit has been issued. Can I move up to regulations?
You can move it up to regulations, however. In the public lottery system. Once, once a a draw occurs. Does that mean that it is therefore permitted? Is the concern here, the concern here in F is that is the phrase where a current permit has been issued from a public lottery draw. So if. Does the public lottery immediately cause the issuance of a permit?
Well, the way this reads, we have to, we can only give people lottery numbers who have. Complete, properly completed applications.
Yes, right.
Takes care of all of that stuff. So I would say. Yes, I would say once, once the. The draw.
So the first one is on Parrot Street, for example. The second one, and the second one is also on Parrot Street. Does that mean that the first one has a current permit?
And the second one doesn't get one.
But does it mean that the first one gets a permit because they're, because they have been drawn? Because their name, the the.
They're drawn first.
They were drawn right.
Or prior to the second.
Right.
Location. So it is pure luck at that point.
Do we, do we want to? Give lottery numbers based on?
I think what Marie's saying is that if there's a lottery and you get the, the way this is written, if in a lottery. You're drawn, that doesn't necessarily mean you're given a permit. You still have to, you still have to, you know. Bide by, you know, you have to follow all the regulations and then you're given the permit. So the way it's written now, it's like the lottery doesn't necessarily mean the first person's going to. Be given a permit. They might not have the space or whatever.
So so. We're on public lottery system, section E.
Yes.
Yes, right. What if you just, what if you just said location priority? Will be given to those first selected in the order of the draw. That way, it, that way, it means that the first person who's. Who's drawn is given that location.
Right, I think we can, and that needs to be followed by if the permit is given. It's not, so the first. That that sounds right, and then it has to be followed by.
Yeah, so so if you look, if you look under short term rental permit, if you look at K. An annual satisfy satisfactory inspection, but the code enforcement officer is mandatory prior to the issuance of permit.
Yeah.
So so the fact that your number was drawn first or second or third. You don't get a permit until all these regulations have been satisfied.
Right.
So that means required to sign up for for the drawing. Because.
So the priority should be given to the first drawn if, you know, they meet satisfactory inspection.
Yes.
Okay, so. So we we do the lottery, we're pulling twenty five numbers today.
Yes.
We pull somebody on High Street.
Yeah.
And somebody else on High Street applies and we don't use that one. So we go on and pick twenty four more. So the second person on High Street, even though he's the second one pulled. So if the first High Street person doesn't pass all the rest of the stuff. The second person pulled is is out of the lottery because.
Yeah.
He's the second High Street.
Right, and and he may not have a C of O, he may not, he or she may not have a satisfactory, may not. Have evidence of insurance, whatever. It it seems to me that having your number drawn. Is is not equivalent to being granted a permit. There are other.
Well, there's ways to do that. I mean, if you want to require people to have to have everything in order before they can even apply. Then that way, if you're, if you're selected, then you know that this person is valid and allowed to have a spot. And if they tie with somebody on their street, two doors down or whatever, then the first drawn will be selected. But then that means everyone has to go through this whole process of having their apartment or their house or whatever.
Inspected.
inspected beforehand and go through all those expenses and they might not get a.
People to do that just to apply.
Right.
But I think we should. You think we should because if you're serious about.
Well, then you can't have twenty five numbers. If someone's going to go through that and then they're never. They could not win that frigging lottery six times, six years in a row, and then be like, why the hell am I even doing? So that, I don't understand twenty five anyway. I don't know how you came to that number. But did you base it off of of existing with?
That was a guess.
And actually, it was equivalent to my age. I I propose that it be twenty five because I'm twenty five years old.
Okay, that works. No, but I I sort of feel that, you know, if you're going to apply for this, that you need to have all your ducks in order.
That's what I'm saying. But but then that's really crappy if you do that all the time and you never win the lottery. Why would you?
Within reason, though, because I I think to. To have an appropriate, you know, an acceptable application, you have to have all the information there. You have to have the location. And and you have to have your insurance and and stuff like that, but. You know, do we need to make people go through all the construction that they would normally do to privatize? That section of the house before they even apply?
Yes, because if you don't have a piece of property that's available for short term rental and you have to do construction. Why are you even bothering to be in this year's lottery? I mean, we're asking for applications. From October first to November first for the following January. So, yeah. If I'm going to reply, I better have a space available, otherwise you don't have a an application.
I agree with that.
Yeah, but I can also imagine where, you know, it's somebody who just has one extra room in their house that they would like to rent out as an SDR. Okay, but they they'd like to, you know, they don't want to go to the expense of, let's say, putting in a private bathroom for that. Particular thing unless they know they're going to be able to. To reasonably make their money back on it.
But they don't, they don't have to put in a private bathroom.
No, they don't, but.
It makes it more attractive.
Yeah.
Rent out, yes, but they don't have to put in a private bathroom.
Okay, let's say a privacy door in their hallway, something like that. Why? I don't know, it just.
But I think if 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 you don't have a a space available to be rented, then you have no right to to block up somebody else's place in the lottery. I really, I really feel that. I mean, you know, there's plenty of people who are ready to go. Who have their space and have their basement, whatever it is, or maybe all they need is an inspection from the code enforcement officer. So why should somebody else who's thinking about it?
I think they should meet all our requirements except for, I don't think there should be a pre-home inspection.
No, I think that's the only thing that could be.
Right, I think that everything else they should have in order.
Yeah, and they need to know the rules.
Should it, is it, should we consider? This section be broken up into two sections. One is. Pre-submission of application and then one is, here's what you have to do once you've got a permit. Yeah, here's, well, here's.
No, I don't, I don't, what would they have to do once they get a permit?
I'm sorry?
Would would be things they, what would be things they have to do once they get a permit?
I I just didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, what things would have to be done once they get a permit?
Nothing.
I don't.
You'd have to have all your ducks in order.
I mean, so, once you get, once you, once you get a permit, you have to do C, you have to do D, you have to do E, you have to do G.
Where where are you?
In short term rental permit.
C is maximum number of days.
Right, you have to conform to that.
Right, I mean, that's, that's after the fact. I mean, the only thing. I think if you, if you're pulled in the lottery, you have X amount of time to get in touch with the code enforcement officer to get the. Inspection, period, end of story. Everything else should be ready.
Okay.
All right.
And if if you fail the inspection.
Then then either if somebody else on your street was pulled and put aside, they should have the next space.
Or you should give them time to remedy it. And if you can't, then you're out.
But so so if you pull tw- twenty five names, twenty five applications for permits and. Two of them fail the inspection. Do you go back and pull the next two independent of location, independent of location?
I would. Indeed, at one point, didn't you write this as being you pull thirty, twenty five plus five?
I thought we did, yeah.
Standby's, and I think we pulled that out. But I mean, that could be something.
I think, yeah, I think we have to draw more than twenty five numbers. I mean, so we draw thirty.
Call those alternates.
Yes, or waiting list or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So why do we do twenty five? Anybody?
I told you, it's my age.
I know, I I apologize for not taking that seriously.
It was, I think it was a number, Steve, that I was like, just I guessed them it on the number that we're kind of in the village.
How many are in the village now, did we determine?
Uh, I don't think we have. So that numbers can be definitely changed.
Yeah, I mean, that that. I don't know if how many are here. I know it's quite a few, more than you think, but but within the actual village proper, I don't know, you know, there's a, there's a lot in that region. Around Phillips Town, but.
So when we write this, we should, we should check that out, see how many there are and need to have some.
You need to root for expansion as well if it should go that way.
Yeah, but not necessarily.
Go back to work ever again because of COVID.
The village isn't going to expand in terms of numbers of properties.
Might determine they want a Airbnb and if.
Yeah, but I don't know.
Hard limit in the, in the code, then that makes it hard to.
Well, I think there should be a limit. I think that all the other miss out municipalities that I looked at did limit it for that reason, because. If you just keep expanding it, then then you lose the character, then you, you know, that's why we're limiting so many per street or whatever, because.
Hey, Steve, I just thought.
You said the right thing. You said within reason, Dave, and that makes sense, but.
So, Steve, I just, I was just thinking. You 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 and your neighbor will be vying to get one permit.
Yeah, maybe we'll go in on the same one. Why? Who who else is my neighbor? Elliot Hammond?
No, the Campbell Estate.
All right. Now, they have an actual Airbnb, I mean, actual B and B. They're on a whole another code, Marie.
No, 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 they're in this one.
No, they're, they're trying to open a proper bed and breakfast.
I I.
Like hotel.
No, they they can't be a, they're not a hotel.
My understanding. You don't have to worry about it, Steve.
They're in chapter one thirty four.
I think there's something in there about if a trustee applies, they get it regardless.
I bet, that seems fair, but yeah.
Only if you run again.
Well, I just did a quick search on the Airbnb site for. For staying over the New Year's Day weekend, and there are over twenty places available within the village.
Yeah.
Right now.
Okay, so twenty five is a not, is a decent number.
Perhaps, yeah.
I mean, and that, and that's only for those who are actually advertising.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't check the other one. What is it? It's not Venmo. There's another.
App.
App, you know, listing platform.
Right, yeah, beyond Airbnb, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just looking at Airbnb.
So when I moved the. No permit will be allowed for any property within seven lots. I moved that up to the regulations. For the time being. We reworded the. Under public lottery system to say location.
Can you make that, can you make that tax lots?
Sure.
Now, is that, is that clear to everyone? Like, if somebody. It's seven in any direction, so it can be across the street and seven up. It's not just seven on your side, on the east side or seven on the west side. Does that clear? Or is there a way to say that more clear? If we're talking about seven lots, you brought up the fact that like, oh, does that mean if you're across the street, does that? You have to go seven lots from there or?
Right, right.
I put, I wrote in, in any direction, Dave, does that help?
I don't know. I mean, seven lots is clear to me kind of, but maybe it doesn't, you know, and maybe in any direction doesn't make sense either that. Does that mean it goes to the next street over behind you? Like, if you're on High Street, does that mean seven from Church Street also?
Yeah, it's a whole.
Um, it does, it does.
I got a little lost. Where are we again?
We're in short-term rental regulation F. I moved from short-term rental permit, I moved that that um F up, so it says no permit will be allowed for any property within seven tax lots in any direction from a lot where a common permit has been issued. Now, if you're in High Street and, I mean, the properties on Church Street are quite a distance from the properties on High Street. So I'm not sure that that is.
No, I don't, I I don't, I don't want that to be part of a regulation. I just want the two sides of the street to be included.
Well, it's it's two sides of the street. So so from Fran's house, um, that would, that would eliminate Phil Heffernan.
No, that's no.
But but that's, that's seven taxes. That's seven tax. But that is seven tax lots in any direction.
Okay, well, we don't want that.
So I'm taking out in any direction, okay.
Yeah, tax lots.
Including up.
Well, why don't you say just seven tax lots on the same street? Uh, or on the same.
You like a lot too. But, I mean, that's.
I mean, at that point, seven tax lots is pretty much you can have one on High Street.
Correct.
And that's fine. I mean, if that's the way we want to go, that's fine, but it's just, there are only um.
But then there's, there's long streets like Parrot, which is basically in Parsnagir, which are basically two s- two streets that you have two on. You could have one on, you know, lower and one on the upper. If that's, or else you could just say one on each street. I guess that's up for discussion. If you want to just, you know, you know, limit to one, you know, Constitution Drive is really long. I mean, I don't know how many houses are there. But somebody could have one at the end, each end, and it seemed to be okay.
I think if people want to do one, they're gonna want to do one. I think you're gonna run into.
I just don't think you want, you don't want to be surrounded by short-term rentals, which you could be. Three people could have, win a draw, and if there's no, you know, regulation on where they can be, your house could be surrounded by them. I don't think we want to penalize residents.
I think it's a good regulation, just as long as we specify that it's on the same street, not on subsequent streets.
Hmm.
You know.
I I think it's a fine regulation. We just have to figure out how to define it.
Okay, let's, let's work that.
So, i- if Felix has, Fran, if Felix has one and Michael has one, they're the two ends of the street, are there seven tax slots in between them?
Um, one, two, probably, yeah.
So you could have two, two on High Street.
And that would be about it. And that's, that's, I mean, they're not, you know, near enough to each other to bother anybody.
Oh, yeah. Listen, I'm just looking at Airbnb right now, and it's like, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten houses all in a row, not including not including the one on the corner of High and Main Street. So.
One on the corner of High and Main?
Conceivably, yeah, you could have two on.
Oh. Yeah.
Or, yeah, it shows there's, that's not right, sorry.
There's also a lot, I mean, we're just, I mean, first of all, in order for that to happen, the people on the ends of the street are gonna have to want to have short-term rentals and they're gonna have to be picked in an order in the draw in order to get that. So what are the odds of that happening?
Well, it's the first one that you worry about, right?
Probably not.
So the first person that gets drawn is is Felix. So what are the chances that Michael Robinson, A, wants to do it and B, uh, gets a draw within the first twenty-five?
And if, probably the the statistics, so so he would say that it's one in twenty-four.
Yes, but that.
That he would get one.
You know, I mean, the the problem would be at this point.
Apply for this. If a hundred people apply for it, that doesn't mean he's gonna be one of the top twenty-five. He might not even get picked.
Right.
I think so. Some of these things, we just have to see how they work. Oh, I mean, the problem at this point of Felix were to get one is, do I want one? Does Chris want one? Does, uh, you know?
Yeah, and this says, you could, and and this says, if Felix gets gets picked first, you can't get one. This would be, um, Main Street would be a problem for this.
Well, we could have.
Main, Main Street would be one district.
Right.
So it applies, same rules, right?
Yeah, and this applies to be one.
Yeah, that's true.
So that's something we have to work on. That's true.
All right, so the question in this is, um.
You want to take, sorry, go ahead.
Come on, is this, whoops, not what I wanted to do. I'm sorry, I wanted to put a comment up.
And in B one, do we want to have a a stat many, that few on, uh, in a B one? Like, you want seven lots between them or what does that mean? Or you want fewer on or more on Main Street?
Yeah, Fran, I think um I would recommend changing from a public lottery draw to from the public lottery draw.
Okay.
And also, I I'd just like to remind us all, just keep in mind the fact that you know, we don't while we strive to have this perfect the first go-round, we don't know how it's actually gonna work. And it, we, you know, future boards of trustees will have the freedom to tweak it as we need to.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, this is gonna.
So, you know, we're just gonna give it our best shot here. We don't have to have it. We don't have to anticipate every single possible scenario that.
So, so this, this won't go into effect until next year. Sorry. This won't go into effect until January of twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two, right.
Yeah.
Okay, the other.
Unless, unless, unless un- unless, of course, you want to uh propose this as a change independent of the code update.
Wouldn't be a bad idea.
It's a, it's a new, you know, I, it's not a bad idea, but I really need to get through the code update before we propose a new chapter.
Yeah, enough to do.
Right, you could, I mean, proposing a new chapter is very straightforward.
But we have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. We could do that. We could, if we can iron this out, we maybe have a public hearing the end of the year.
End of the year would be tough.
Probably next year.
Yeah.
See where we go. Let's, let's, let's bang some of these, these things out and I think the priority drawing thing and the separation or lots or whatever we want to call them, so that's clear, are two things. I think the rest, I mean, the numbers, we ought to discuss and see what people are comfortable with. And uh, I I don't think the others, you want to go skip over some of these, uh, Fran? If if people want to stay a little longer, do you want to go on?
I'm good to go on for another fifteen twenty.
I mean, just not not to get in any long things. See if we can eliminate or agree on some of these changes or whatever.
Okay, uh, there was a whole bunch of discussion um here. Let me see. Public lottery system, we're just rewording the last part of that, location priority.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's confusing, but let's move on.
All right, yeah, so just flag that and we'll, and that's one of the things we gotta talk to, to talk about.
All right, so we'll, we'll move on in there. Um, short-term rentals, rentals in the district will be required to have one-off street parking space. Um.
Yeah, I have a problem with that. Um, in R one, um, i- i- the uh requirement is two parking spaces per, um, uh, two parking spaces. If if someone is renting out three rooms in their house and and I see it next to me, multiple cars are come for the rental. So one parking space is not sufficient.
I just think that, I think for new construction, that two parking spaces are are required. But if you went through this village and I I guarantee you that ninety percent of the houses probably don't have two parking spaces.
Put on, on the, some of these small sides.
Six personally, but, you know.
You can run that to everyone else.
All right.
On some of these small side streets, say Stone Street, Church Street, who doesn't have enough parking now for their residents. If you're gonna bring in short-term rental people.
But if there, most of the people are gonna rent out their house and they're, and so they're not gonna be there, so there's
right.
There's the parking that they had would, should suffice, because most people have two cars, so.
Right.
And we're limiting the number of people to, well, if part of this was, and also up for discussion is how many people you would allow. So if you allow for adults, they come in two cars, it's the same as a person that's living somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
If they're renting out the whole house.
Right, but that's what most people do. I don't see a lot of, I mean, there's some, but I think for the most part, people rent their houses.
I mean.
I I maybe that's not true, but I don't know.
I'm okay with that.
That whole house rental thing may change when you have the two hundred and sixty-day minimum residency thing. Like, people that are owning them, just as Airbnb properties won't be allowed to rent them out anymore.
Yeah.
That won't happen. I don't know how many of those there are in town. I really, I really don't.
Okay, so Fran, in rentals in the district, comma, except the B one, it's, it should, should be except the B dash one district.
Okay. So what are we requiring for? What are we requiring for the B one?
As I read it, none.
Yeah.
So if someone's renting in a B one, well, good luck to them. They're gonna have to find parking municipal lot down to.
They can pay us down at the mayor's park when we put the the uh.
Okay, I'm I'm okay at this point with one off-street parking space.
Me too.
Yeah, I think that's a problem, but, okay.
I mean, there's just never gonna be enough parking for anything you might want to do here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, there just never is. There's no way we can create more parking than there is.
I think.
I agree, I I agree that we can't create more parking, but here we're potentially exacerbating what what little exists.
But it's already happening anyway, and we also can't discount the fact that a lot of people who come to stay here ride the train.
The vast majority.
To and from. Or, you know, Uber, Lyft.
That's not, that's not what I see with the one um nearby me.
That's one, Marie.
Yeah, that's one. It's the one I can see from my, from my.
It's not there anymore, from what I understand. There's new one.
I I thought I saw them, I thought I saw different people this weekend.
Oh, you're a Snoopy neighbor.
I am, I am.
Why I need six-foot fences.
Yep.
I am, I am, and they have, they have six-foot fences behind them. Um, so.
Apparently, they're not tall enough.
No, they're not on the side. On C, we, the, the use of days and nights is intermixed here, and I think it should be all one or all the other.
I agree.
So what this says here is so it it should be a hundred and five nights.
No, I don't think it should be a hundred and five anything, but that's beside the point. Okay.
Yeah, yes, I understand.
Yeah, that makes it so somebody who hasn't, who has an SDR can rent it out every single weekend for the entire year.
Right, which I, I think in an R one district is way too much. Um, and that's.
Kind of tend to agree with me on there. I'd like to see a little bit more limitation, not.
Oh, I'd like to, I mean, I, I don't know if we want to go by. My suggestion was maybe sixty nights or maybe twelve rental instances, which gives a little, may give a little bit more if you're gonna rent it for I don't know, four nights, five nights, something like that, or fifteen rental instances. Um, a hundred and five in a B one district may not be bad. But in an R one district, I think that's what, that's way too much. Oh. So that's.
I'm, I'm.
I don't know anybody else.
They're making it less, come up with a number.
I'd split the difference and go to seventy-five.
Well, you, you what, or you, Fran, sixty?
I had said sixty.
That's thirty weekends.
Right, which is, which is more than half of the year.
Or you could rent it out for the summer for two months.
Oh, yeah, or you could.
No, you can't. Twenty-nine, twenty-nine maximum days.
Three different, three different groups, two different groups or something.
Yeah.
I mean.
I know a lot of those Main Street uh B and Bs rent out way more than that.
Yeah, but that's, this, I'm talking R one. I'm talking about splitting it.
All the time, and sometimes they get extended stays in there, especially during COVID.
I think, I think in a B one district, they have a little bit more flexibility. It's a business district. They can have a business if they want. In our one district, uh, you've got people who live in a residential neighborhood who aren't happy about having, you know, new.
I agree. I think it's, I think that's good. We're just gonna have to break this down to B one and R one reg- regulations, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, should we throw a number in? Are we good with sixty to start?
See, you can throw.
Good with sixty.
Sixty for R one. And then just put a little B one with a question mark. Okay, the next, just let's move along here. The only owner occupied property may be used. Is that good with everyone?
Yeah.
Accessory buildings, we talked about that, so that's out. Is that right?
Yeah, that H should come out.
Okay, H is out.
Okay, oh, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, what, why, why are you taking, why is that being taken out?
Which?
Which, I'm sorry.
The one, the one that H.
And we moved it up. I think we moved it up.
Oh, yes, to A. You moved it to A.
Said it needed, it needed, Lynn said it wants, should be the first thing there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can we talk about G just a little bit?
Um, with one child.
Okay. Um. First of all, um.
Which one is that again? Sorry, Lynn.
Number G. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about G. Um. Are, what, two adults and one child, five years old and under white, what happens? What happens to anybody who's got a child between five years old and eighteen, who may be staying with us?
Okay, there, it's just numbers, so come up with something that you could, or actually.
I think we should just say two adults and one child.
Yeah.
This is perfectly reasonable that a ten-year-old might sleep on the floor or something.
Okay.
You know.
That, but is a child also a twenty-one-year-old?
Oh, I was thinking eighteen, but.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
And what it, are we, are we limiting? So we're, we're limiting the number of people that can actually stay in an SDR, in any given SDR.
In a room, yeah.
Or a bedroom. Well, no, yeah, we are limiting.
Yeah, the house, there's a limit as well. So, because. If you have six bedrooms and there was two adults and a child in each bedroom, uh, would be eighteen people.
Okay, so then I got confused about short-term rental u- all right, short-term rental unit is just the bedroom, right?
No, it's the whole rental. I think, I think we need to take the maximum for adults. If if we limited to adults and one child per bent bedroom, I think the the end part of that should come out.
No, because the, because what's going up, there's uh, you can have, you can have, then you could have, then you're talking about more cars, then you're talking about more disturbance, you're talking about all the problems. more cars, then you're talking about more disturbance, you're talking about all the problems we've had, and why everything came up and blew up last year was because there were so many people in one, one unit, so. So I don't see why we can't limit it to four people. It's people will have a chance to, you know, it's, it's not gonna be fit for everyone, but.
Yeah.
You have four P, four adults, that's two cars and a kid or whatever, and, and people have a place to stay. It gives more people a chance to stay in different places in the village and, and, but it doesn't restrict it. But yet, you know, it doesn't get abused, so that it doesn't become a hotel or.
Right.
Okay.
No, I, I get you. I, I get you on that. I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking. I'm thinking about the wedding party that comes and wants to get married here in Cold, in Cold Spring. And you've got the bride and the groom and the parents and, uh, both bride and groom, and then you've got some in the wedding party. Um, if someone has a three-bedroom house that they want to rent as an STR, you know, they could reasonably get six people in there, is, is for the amount that, the total number of people that. I mean, is that the limit or?
I.
Be considered a few more. That's all.
Same with West Point graduations and people.
Yeah.
With their.
I mean, we're talking about families a lot of times.
Yeah. I have to go, everybody, I'm sorry.
Are you talking about friends and, you know, couples?
Yeah, see that.
Crazy. Kager, I have to go, everybody, I'm sorry.
Nice, Steve.
I gotta deal with. All right.
I would, it's going up to six.
I would, I'm, I'm sticking with four. I just want to keep it as small as possible and still have people able to make money and have something. I'm not trying to make a, a, you know, a wedding party, first of all, it says party, and that's just what it could be.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. All right, swooping down.
Okay.
The host of and designee, uh, must live within the boundaries of.
The agent. It's not the designated.
Designated becomes agent, right?
Right.
Boundaries.
So, so what this says is that, oh, the host or the agent must live within the boundaries of the village at the ti, time the STR is occupied.
Okay, and they have to be able to, uh, to respond within twenty minutes. That's typical. That's not unusual.
Yeah.
Host can prominently display.
I'm sorry, if they live within the village, it's reasonable for them to respond within fifteen minutes.
Right, unless they're in the middle of something. I mean, twenty minutes is not an unusual amount of your.
I don't think there's gonna be a stopwatch on it.
Yeah. Okay, and we talked about the, uh, list of contact names and numbers, um, and we should generate the list and the codes to be displayed. So do we want to just? Okay, yeah, this is something the village will generate, and that, that's fine with that. I'm just gonna leave that comment there. Okay, um, check-ins not a lot.
I had a comment, I had a comment in P, change designated agent.
Thank you.
And.
And then, and then again, in the last sentence.
If owner advertises their rental, the village permit number must be included in any and all listing services. I don't know anything about that, but that sounds logical to me. Just do the votes.
I'm sorry, I've got to get off.
Yeah, I get, I, I agree. Why don't we stop there?
Works for me, okay.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Night all, we, we officially closing the meeting?
Uh, yeah, just Lynn, Lynn, when we, you know, go to public hearings, I mean, maybe people think six is fine, you know, so, you know, I'm not saying that's.
Yeah, I, I know, I'm just.
I mean, I think a lot, all this can totally change, maybe, you know. So we'll see what people think also, but.
Yeah, yeah. I'm good with that. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yep.
Do you want to, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Second from Lynn, all in favor?
Hi, hi. Good night all, thank you. Good night, we'll see you Tuesday. Good night, Tuesday night, right?
Yep, Tuesday.
Six or six-thirty, six.
Six-thirty.
Tuesday, six-thirty. Thank you, good night.
See you then.